Good morning. I will call to order the May 1st, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, seeing all three commissioners present. I'll ask Scott France of planning to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free and equal exercise, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we've got an exciting agenda today and a number of guests here who we're excited to welcome. I'll just start by recognizing that today is May 1st, and since 1889, May 1st has been recognized throughout the world as International Workers' Day. It marked the beginning of demonstrations for the legal establishment of an eight-hour workday. What's especially important for us to recognize is that Pennsylvania was a critical part of the history the labor movement continues to be, and much of that began actually in places like where I grew up, in Carver County, in the coal and steel industries, where so much of the work that was fueling the progress of the country at the time of the Industrial Revolution was work that also put workers in harm's way. And when you think about the importance of many of the regulations, the laws, the structures that have been put in place to protect workers' rights at that time, it was protect the health. We recognize here in Monco that a strong working class and middle class is one that must be protected by laws protecting the dignity of work, respecting every worker, and ensuring that there's access to education and economic opportunity for all. And that's something that's critical for functioning of our society as a democracy. So that's May Day, so Happy May Day, have fun. We also have an election coming up on May 20th, so we have a primary election. I know if you're a poll worker, you've perhaps gone to some of the trainings that have begun. I would thank the voter services team. Those trainings are long, there's a lot of details to go through, a lot of mistakes that can happen anytime 500,000 people try to do one thing, but we've got a great team and people have already received their ballots, they've been voting, those ballots are being received by voter services in the mail. There's still time to request them, so please do so now or make a plan to vote on Election Day, Tuesday, May 20th. You can also come into a number of our satellite offices around the county, which I think you'll have a listing of the locations and times. We've got our mobile office as well, the voter van, which is traveling around the county, stopping locations where you can see a listing online of where they will be, and will make it easier for people to vote across the county at different spaces. So again, Election Day, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Tuesday, May 20th, so please make a plan. You can easily go to moncopavotes.gov to find your registration status to make sure that everything's squared. So I'll also note that we're excited to announce a new resource online, which is our Immigrant Resource Center webpage, and that's something that was put together by our new Director of Immigrant Affairs, Nelly Mendez Arvalo, and we've put together a comprehensive list of different resources for the county that people can reach. No matter how old you've been here, you should have all the same access to our resources. So the Septa funding crisis, you're going to hear about this a lot, and more so when we get into the budget season in Harrisburg, but you are facing a crisis with funding for Septa. Essentially, if you look at all the other cities around the country, power transit system and mass transit system receive significantly less from state government than you'll see in other regions. For example, you know, the Boston area would see close to $1 billion, and Septa is hoping to close their $213 million shortfall with investment from Harrisburg, and that's going to be a big part of the debate right now in Harrisburg. And the consequences are really horrific for Montgomery County. We would stand the most to lose in property values if the bus lines and service lines were canceled, the ones that need to be. So for example, the first ones to go would be Pay Only Thorndale, you know, the Norristown, Manny Uncle Lines, Chestnut Hill. Literally, the main line, you know, would be sidelined, and that's bad for people who work in the city coming from Montgomery County, and it's also bad for people from Monco that are commuting in. So we're going to continue to be loud about this issue. If you have a story you want to share, perhaps you're someone who uses Septa every day, perhaps you've used it to go to a Phillies game, perhaps you've used it to, because you're someone who has a disability and has to use fast transit. And, you know, any of those stories you have, please send to us, please reach out. It's very easy to find my email address, but please, you know, be a part of this advocacy because it's going to be devastating for Montgomery County if we lose those transit options. Final two notes I've got is one, a big part of supporting economic growth here in Montgomery County is the work of our Commerce Department and the Industrial Development Authority. We have great small businesses on vibrant main streets around the county, which hopefully will stay vibrant if we fund Septa. But our region has become a critical hub for life science and startups, so much that I've heard people calling the Philly area Seligton Valley. This week, the Industrial Development Authority chaired by our county treasurer made a very strong investment in Monco startups. It's part of a program called Monco Made, and they've committed half a million dollars to Ben Franklin Technology Partners in southeastern Pennsylvania, which is a nonprofit early-stage investor in our region. And we've invested about a million in startups prior, so this would bring the total funding to 1.5 million, and it's just an example of the great work that our Commerce Department under Steve Forster and the IDA are doing to support economic development here in Monco. So if you're an investor, if you're an entrepreneur or a startup employee who's searching for investors, please reach out to Ben Franklin Technology Partners about the program, and Steve Forster, our Commerce Director, is always a good point person for all the resources. Finally, before I turn it over to my fellow commissioners, we're going to have a little fun with a very special guest, and that's Josh Weichert, who's a Collegeville resident and six-time Jeopardy champion. He's here with us today. So when he isn't dominating the field in Jeopardy, Josh is a professor at Immaculata University's Civic Engagement Department, appreciate that. He's also an officer in the U.S. Army Reserve and a staffer with Representative Joe Webster. So in late March, Josh went on a Jeopardy tear, winning six nights in a row and bringing home over $100,000 in winnings. So thank you, Josh, for joining us today. You are a great ambassador for Montgomery County. We're all very proud to see your win, your wins, and so we thought it'd be good to test some Monco knowledge for everyone here. The final Jeopardy game.
One word of caution before this happens, it is far more important to be basketball Jeopardy than be knowledgeable.
Perfect. All right, so this is going to be directed by our version of Alex Trippbeck. Will you get all two's our comms director?
All right.
Yeah, I need click pens. I'm actually writing.
Yeah, so everybody was going to get a piece of paper and a marker. It'll be like final Jeopardy.
I have to participate?
Fair enough.
We have a couple of questions, we'll see how well you do. Okay, everybody ready? We don't have the music, unfortunately, but all right, you ready? Yep, go ahead. So this hard-to-spell river flows through Montgomery County, originating in Pottsville and ending in the Delaware River. Can you repeat the question?
Spelling does not count on Jeopardy.
It doesn't? All right, let's see. Show your answers. The Skookel River, very good, although nobody answered in the form of a question. So, okay, all right. So get outdoors with this friendly competition. For 10 years, Monco residents have found hidden symbols and won prizes, not to mention gained healthy habits. Cheating. There's a kickoff to this event happening this Saturday.
Oh, I know.
All right, let's see your answers. What is, the Trail Challenge is correct.
It's on my calendar.
Speed part of it, so like the first person to put up their answer.
Yeah, that's what Josh does. This is final Jeopardy. We're doing final Jeopardy.
I'm just saying.
Final, okay, we'll do one more. So this restored 18th-century Pennsylvania German farm was once a headquarters for General George Washington in 1777, not the famous member of Fallout Boy, like the name might suggest. So this is a Pennsylvania German farm that the county owns that also has a name similar to the famous member of Fallout Boy. I was pretty proud of this one.
I've driven past it.
You asked ChatGPT to make this?
No, I wrote this. I wrote this. I wrote this at like 11:00 PM on Tuesday. All right, ready? Let's see. Anybody guess? The Peter Wentz Farm.
Who knows their 90s emo music? Come on. I was going to say Mary Mead, but that doesn't.
No, not, Pete Wentz is a famous member of Fallout Boy. We do have two more if you want to keep going. We have, this county-owned park shares its colorful name with its home borough. You'll be envious of its 3,400 acres and three bodies of water. Mr. Winder is.
Watch out, Josh.
The producers will want to say, everyone, go online and take the Jeopardy Anytime Test.
There you go. Correct, Green Lane Park, very good. What is Green Lane Park? All right, this is the last one. This one might, I, this one is hard. Born in Norristown in 1951, this jazz fusion trails blazer is famous for his unique bass-guitar playing, which can be heard on four Joni Mitchell albums.
My wife is going to kill me, he has visited her music classroom at Eisenhower Middle School, and I can't remember the name.
This one is very hard. All right, we'll show the answer.
This could be the moment where we beat a Jeopardy champion.
Could be. All right, we'll show the answer, and who is Jeko Pastoria. Learn something new. Camille Pique. All right, very good, love it.
Take a photo with Josh?
Oh, gracious, thank you so much.
All right, right here. One, two, three. Thank you.
Since I semi have the floor here, I just want to say the community support around Montgomery County in general, and especially around Collegeville area where I'm from, has been really phenomenal, so thank you all so much, really.
Great, with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Winder.
So what I would say, Josh, before you leave, we started our roots at Paul V. Fly Elementary School, and I went to school with your sister, who is an amazing educator in the Norristown area public schools, but I was visiting my dad at the hospital a couple of weeks ago, and I ran into Mrs. Carfagno. If you, if you know the Norristown area, and Milton, you know, Mrs. Carfagno was the principal at Paul V. Fly, so we can owe her a debt of gratitude to our education and you, being on Jeopardy, she was really proud of you when I saw her. So congrats to you and thank you for being here. Okay, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here, and it's good to see so many smiling faces. So I have a few announcements. First up, we have some members of the Montgomery County Community College Mustangs Women's Basketball Team here with us. I'd like to invite Athletic Director Kelly Dunbar up to introduce the team and talk about their accomplishments this, this past season. So if you don't mind, I don't mind putting you on the spot, but I would love for you just, you can, actually, you can do both teams. Yeah, that would be great. Yep.
Hi, everyone, I'm Kelly Dunbar, like she said. We're really proud over Monco, we offer intercollegiate varsity, intercollegiate athletics over there, two-year eligibility. We have some wonderful student athletes here. We have Ibianna from Norristown and Rachel Dunn from North Penn High School. They were both on our women's basketball championship region 19, so this is New Jersey and Delaware at Pennsylvania, so we're really excited about that. And then we have our esports team, I'm not going to introduce all of them, but they are Marvel Rivals champions. We've had esports now for about five years, and this is our fourth national championship. So again, we're really excited over at Monco, able to offer a multi-different sports for students in the county. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. So, you know, I just wanted to invite the teams here today because it's, you know, just a point of pride. You know, oftentimes, people don't know some of the programming and extracurricular activities that you have for students at Monco. And when I was at the board meeting last, to meet these young ladies and to know what they accomplished this season and what it means for not only Monco, for the community, just wanted to be here and celebrate with you. So the Mustangs won the North Atlantic District Championship and competed in Nationals for the first time ever, so that, that is huge. So congratulations to the basketball team. And the Mustang Esports Team, so if you could just stand, stand up, those that are on the team. So this, this is our varsity team, right? And so they won first place in the NJCAA Championship, while the junior varsity team secured third place. And so for those that don't know, Marvel Rivals is an online game where teams controlling Marvel superheroes and villains compete in fast-paced battles against other colleges. So congratulations to you. So we're going to bring everybody up, but we'll bring this team up first, and then we'll bring the girls' basketball team up for a photo. Congrats for being here. Congrats. Congrats. All right, I'm going to get on the end here. There we go. We're heavy on Monco.
One, two, three. Thank you.
We'll invite the girls' basketball team up. Congrats to you. Thank you.
And really quick, we'd just like to present some Mustang swag to the board, so there's different sizes here, I'll just leave them.
Thank you.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. I just shout out to college leadership. I know the president of the college could not be here, but thank you for her leadership and Mike always, thanks for facilitating, making this, well, do a shape, want to come on soon? She texted me. Oh, well, Dr. Mestecchi Perez, thank you for your leadership, and thanks for jumping online, so thank, thank you. All right, next up, does everybody know that next week is Teachers Appreciation Week? Do we have any teachers here? Oh, good, good. I knew, I knew that I had a hunt. It should be Teachers Appreciation Week all year round, right? Am I right? So I just want to just recognize that it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I hope that our teachers across Montgomery County receive some delicious treats and some big thanks from students and families in the community beyond, you know, coming from a family of educators and working in higher education. I certainly know firsthand how hard you all work to shape young minds and ensure that we pour into the, the next generation of leaders. So I just want to wish you a happy Teachers Week, and hopefully we'll be visiting some schools next week to, to show our appreciation. And then also, it's Nurses Appreciation Week, another profession that often goes unnoticed. The work they do is, is invisible at times, but they're essential pillars, like teachers of our community and of our healthcare system. I think all of us who have needed care or visited a loved one in a healthcare setting can recall a story or a moment when a nurse showed extraordinary care and compassion, and I'll share one of my stories. When my mom was in the ICU, she was, we were getting ready to put her on hospice. My dad, at the same time, was in the same hospital from my illness, but in another room. And if it had not been for the nurses on that ICU, my dad would not have been able to say goodbye to my mother. So they broke protocol to ensure that as a family, we could be together in those moments where we had to say our final goodbyes to our mother. So I have so many personal stories of the ways that nurses have impacted our family, and I'm sure many of you can think about nurses that have impacted yours. So take a moment next week to thank a teacher, to thank a nurse. They do extraordinary work in our communities, and just wanted to honor them this morning. Sunday, May 11th, is Mother's Day. There are many, there are many faces of motherhood, and each one is shaped by care, resilience, and connection. So show of hands, who's a mom in the room? Okay? Or who's a bonus mom? Or who's a caregiver, right? So I just want to take a moment to thank and honor all those who have served as mother figures in our community. We see you, we recognize your guidance and your strength. Earlier this month, I joined Monco Mamas, Mr. Morgan, I went to Monco Mamas, a proud advocate of Monco Mamas, and a clamo at their annual community baby shower. It was a beautiful way to connect with new families and share resources and stories, and it was a heartwarming reminder of how strong and supportive our community can be when people are in their new journey of motherhood. I want to thank everyone that brought this event together, and it was an honor to be there, to, to see the, the newest moms. Our Department of Health and Human Services also recently hosted the Second Annual Mothers Alive Conference, which I was honored to kick off that event. This event was a powerful collaboration between healthcare experts and people with lived experiences, and it was aimed at shaping how we improve maternal health and reduce disparities in maternal outcomes. As I've said before, the county is committed to being a village for all members of our community, and I'm proud we are showing up in these ways. Mother's Day can be a joyful day to share with family, it can also be a time of reflection and mourning. Whether you are celebrating, remembering, or simply taking up space for yourself, I'd like to wish you a warm and peaceful Mother's Day to all that celebrate this Sunday. And then two other things for me. Finally, well, I want to take a question of John DiNefoli, who served the citizens and first responders of Montgomery County for nearly 40 years as a dispatcher before retiring in February 2022. Even in retirement, John remained with our Department of Public Safety in a part-time capacity until his untimely passing. John also served as a member of the Norristown Fire Department for 52 years and served as the 19th Chief of that department. I want to extend my deepest condolences to John's family, friends, and colleagues in the first responder community. We are so grateful for the years he devoted to serving the people and first responders of Montgomery County. And so I'd like to pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. The viewing for, for John will be held from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Volpe Funeral Home, so Friday, May 2nd, from 10:00 to 12:00, at 707 West Germantown Pike at Whitehall Road in East Arton. In lieu of flowers, memorial contributions can be made in John's memory to the Norristown Fairmount Fire Department or the Montgomery County Heroes Fund. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to acknowledge the Norristown Area Girls' Track Team, who ran in the Pen Relays and took first place in the 4x400 at the Pen So before I put Milton on the spot to introduce his, his amazing team, I'm going to reflect for a minute. So when I was in, I think, eighth grade, ran the 4x100, and that was a long time ago, girls, it was a long time ago. I ran the 4x100, and he took home a cookie as well, that's, that medal is called. Oh, there's me, I'm in the front, they shined a little light on me. If you've never been to the Pen Relays, like, and especially as, as a young adult or as a child, it's just like a life-changing experience. There are so many athletes from around the country, around the area, and to win is nothing short of amazing. And so really proud of you, Milton, and we ran together at Norristown Area High School. You were much more accomplished athlete than I was, but I'm thrilled that you are an educator and you are a coach, giving back to our community. So can you take a moment to just talk about this experience and introduce the team? Um, yeah, you know what, it's, yeah, come up here, come, so everybody can see you, that's fine. Girls, come on up.
So first and foremost, you and I actually met, actually, we screened, we're also going to that team, so it's a nostalgic moment, you know, definitely to be here with her as an honor, so thank you for that. Second, I am a Norristown graduate and also a track team member, so it's also a strength I'm going to come back and guide the young people and be able to give them opportunities to be able to carry on the legacy that we were all with. The ladies here ran really, really every time we out, first, our first thing since 2016, non-tennis race. We should have bought the cookie, as I said, it's like a, sometimes the relay's type, they give everyone, so that's our first. And just want to let you know, we ran 35661, which is currently, right now, one of the top 10 times in the state, so it really looked well down there. But I just want to introduce all the young ladies, Eva Savage, who is our only senior, she has headed the University of Ball, the track scholarship. Junior Nala Kendall, junior Natalia Johnson, and then sophomore Georgia Olivera, so. They've done really, really well, and just really proud of their accomplishments. So now we're going to go to the next part of our journey of the, of our track field competitions, which we have our district championships, and then follow-up for our state championships. So I just want to thank everybody for the knowledge and our input and the contribution we've had this come up with.
Yeah, great, thank you. Well, we'll come up for a quick break. And while they're coming up, the 400 is one of the hardest races to run. And while they're coming up, the 400 is one of the hardest races to run. And I never liked running it. My coach always made me run the 400, so.
All right, right here. One, two, three. Thank you.
Commissioner DeBello, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'll try to go quick here. Just a couple of things. I'll just hit a couple of things real quick. This week, or was last week, actually, was Bring Your Child to Work Day to county. It's always a great showing for the young people and the parents that bring them here, where the county could actually show the many careers that their, that their parents are involved in. It's always a fun day. The kids really enjoy themselves. They get to go to different county departments. Some of the departments they visit was Planning Commission, the Sheriff's Department, DA's office, HHS, and others. And they learn about what, what each of those departments do and really get a look at what their parents do as well. They get to take a, you know, go throughout all the different buildings and all that. But one of the highlights always seems to be the robotic dog in our sheriff's office. I don't know if we have a picture there or not. So, I hope we pique some interest in, in public service and local government, and maybe we'll have a few future county employees or even elected officials someday soon. So, I hope it was rewarding for everyone involved. Last meeting, we talked about the Trail Challenge, and this Saturday, the Monaco Trail Challenge begins and runs through December 1st. We'll be hosting a kickoff event 10:00 a.m. on Saturday at the Central Perkyomen Valley Park in Swansville. There's some rain in forecast, unfortunately, so it may be a little too gloomy. And if so, we'll move it to Sunday, May 3rd, 10:00 a.m. So, just keep an eye out on social media, and a decision on the rain date will be made probably by 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, May 2nd. So, if you're in the area or you want to start your Trail Challenge, come out and join us. It'll be a lot of fun. There's over 100 miles of trails throughout Montgomery County, so it's a great opportunity to get out, walk the trails, see, see Montgomery County, and just relax a little bit from, from our hectic likes, lives that we have. Make sure you get your Trail Passport and log all the icons at the different trails around the county, and at the end of the challenge, you can redeem your passport for prizes. Last year, we had over 1,400 people participate in the challenge, plus 67 dogs. So, it's a great way for the whole family to get out and participate. We have people as old as 86 last year participating, as well as all the way down to infants with their parents. So, if you know anyone older than 86 who might want to participate, maybe they'll get a special prize. They'll get them out there on the trails. And also, you know, I like to talk about, you know, things like this, that real special moments between two high schools. Not last year, in the Springford School District, we lost a student, Jason Crater, in an accident, a car accident. Jay, his friends that call him, was also a member of the Springford baseball team and play, actually, played in the Springford youth football program that I ran as well. So, it's a little close to home when this happens. Last week, there was a baseball game between Norristown High School and Springford. And before the game, the Norristown players presented the Springford players with a special bracelet in honor of Jay. So, I want to commend the Norristown baseball players and their coaches and families for this act of kindness. I believe this, the bracelet actually had his number on it, so it was really, really special. So, when I think of all the reasons sports are so great for kids and sportsmanship is at the top of that list, they showed so much respect for their opponents with this gesture. And I know that, as being a youth coach for years and running the youth programs, I mean, that's what we really, really, really want to instill in our, in our kids when they're participating. And it's so great to see that, all the way through high school, that they take those lessons learned and they do something, a gesture, that it's just amazing for them to show that recognition. And I know that the kids in the Springford School District, on the baseball team as well, was really, really happy and appreciative of that gesture. So, I want to share the condolences with the Springford, as well as Jay's family and his friends. And we hope that we don't see anything like that in the future. But please remember, as our young kids out there speeding or whatever it may be, always could end up in a tragic. So, please, please, always, I know you think it can never happen to me, but please be careful out there, especially as we're going into the graduation season and the summer months ahead. Please just be careful, because there are dire consequences that you may not think about that, that does and will continue to happen in the future. So, please be careful. And if, as mentioned, Commissioner Weiner mentioned, next Sunday is Mother's Day. I mean, I think we all agree that moms are awesome. So, take that moment to recognize your moms and thank them for everything that they do for you. And if you're lucky enough, spend a day with your mother, because I know that she will definitely, will definitely enjoy that. And then finally, I had the opportunity, I think it'll probably be the last celebration for the Eagles this year, until they go into the Super Bowl next year again, right? So, but I had the opportunity, the Eagles, putting politics aside, I had the opportunity, I was invited down to the White House. They had the Eagle celebration on Monday, and it was, it was a great experience to go down and be part of that celebration. We were on the South Lawn. It was a little hot, but it was still a lot of fun. And, you know, everybody was excited that to be there and celebrate our Super Bowl champions, the Philadelphia Eagles. So, so that's it. Thank you.
All right, next up, we'll be hearing the proclamation for MCIU male school mathletes from our Mayor of North Wales, Neil McDevitt.
Good morning, everyone.
Let's get you a microphone.
I'm not being on camera, though. No problem. Good morning, everyone. Thank you to all the commissioners for welcoming me here. I act, I did a quick Google search, and this is the first time that a deaf-elected official is doing a proclamation in the United States, in American Sign Language. So, thank you for giving me this opportunity. My privilege and my pleasure being here to read this proclamation in American Sign Language on behalf of the commissioners. Whereas the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit is a point of pride for Montgomery County and its residents in providing quality services for students with disabilities. And whereas a team of students from the MCIU was assembled to represent the county for the very first time at this competition. Max Baxter of Lower Marion School District, a 6th grader. Tyler Schaefer of Wissahickin School District, 6th grade. Tony Wu of Upper Marion School District, 7th grade. And Sadie Zavada of North Penn School District, 7th grade. And, and whereas the team was coached by Becky Peters and Brooke Logan of the MCIU, Melissa Hall from the North Penn School District, and Colleen and Kevin Schaefer, parents. And they met weekly to practice not just the mathematical concepts used in the competition, but how to support each other as a team. And whereas, at the National Middle School Math Competition, hosted by the Rochester Institute of Technology's National Technical Institute for the Deaf, on Saturday, April 5th, 2025, the MCIU team placed second, despite being much younger than their peers. Max and Sadie were selected to compete in individual competitions, placing first and fourth respectively. And now, therefore, the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, along with me, Mayor Neil McDevitt, Mayor of the Borough of North Wales, celebrate Montgomery County's diverse residents and commitment to accessibility, and hereby proclaim May 1st, 2025, in celebration of the MCIU middle school mathletes.
We'll bring you all up for a photo. Thank you, Mayor Neil, for the proclamation. It's really fantastic to make history today, for you to be able to do that and to celebrate our mathletes here in Monco. And before we bring up everyone for a photo, I'll just, you know, we've had a conversation about the importance of disability access, the kinds of federal funding that we talked about. The Federal Department of Education puts $38 million just into, into IDA funding in Montgomery County, and we're going to continue to advocate for funds like that and also the enforcement of the ADA, which is absolutely critical to make sure that every child has the same opportunities, because clearly, you have extraordinary capability, and, you know, you're showing us what you're doing as students. We want to support you in every way that we can. So, thank you, and come on up. Let's take a photo.
All right. One, two, three. Thank you. I'm going to get one, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Say hi to Joe. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so with that, we will move on to the first public comment period, which is for today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, RPs, and contracts. Do we have any comments?
David Morgan.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm David Morgan from Amlor, and I'm interested in discussing Exhibit B5 and B6, because the Ridge Pike project is ongoing, and I know that it says there's a lot of federal reimbursements in this. But then again, it's so ongoing, and it's part Planning Commission and probably part assets and infrastructure. I just want to make sure that our tax money is monitored well in this whole project. I think it's up to about $35 million in costs, so, from the county part, if I understand it right. So, any updates, commissioners can tell us about this project, that it's cost-effective, it's, you have $21 million, $19 million as the two figures. At the end of this, five and six on page 2 of 20. So, anything that you can help us, because I mention this because, Commissioner DeBello, you were mentioning at the end of this January meeting and last meeting about how our standing is with being in deficit possibly in the counties. Are we creeping from $35 million to maybe $40-plus million in deficit as this year's going? And as taxpayers or renters are concerned about their cost of living, affording everything in the county, I'd like to just have you give us updates on the effect of Ridge Pike, plus all these other spending projects on our tax bills upcoming, because we've had five in a row. I've shown you the chart before, and I like to bring it, because it's not often known to people if they have mortgage servicing on their taxes. So, we're, we have seen 5, 8, 8, 13, and 9.69, if you look at the top line only, for tax increases. So, I think this being the sixth year in that sequence, let's really keep after it, because here we are, quarter of the year about, done. A lot of people have gone to taxpayer offices. So, with this Ridge Pike project, can it, between the two functions of Assets and Infrastructure and Planning Commission, be well-handled? I know Mr. France one time sent me a letter saying that there is some way that you can get federal grants, and so, if that's going to help us, that's good. But I'd just like to have that ongoing awareness, because we do have the quarterly reports started up, which happened so far, from the finance officer. And in those reports, just to see where we're standing in terms of spending, that we're not, once again, having to approach a big tax increase, as we've seen especially in the last two years, just got double digits, 13 and almost 10. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Great. Okay, moving on to the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the April 17th, 2025 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting? By Commissioner DeBello, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Weiner. Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved. Moving on to resolution number one. I'll ask Scott France to present an authorization to enter into an agreement of sale.
Thank you and good morning, commissioners. We have just one slide to accompany this, and it's a unique situation through our agricultural preservation program. Just so everyone knows, that program provides the development rights to farm owners so that the farm may remain in agricultural use in perpetuity, and then the farmer gets recipient of those funds to help sustain and keep the farm going. The money comes from a combination of state and, and local sources, including the county. This particular farm is the Clara Raymond Farm in Marlborough Township. It was actually approved, and, and an offer was made and accepted back in 2023. However, it's gone through a pretty lengthy process, and in 2000, 2024, the state, upon trying, attempting to execute this agreement, identified through the surveying, a parcel that the county owned within the farm lot. And while it had been assumed originally that that parcel was on the border of a former railroad corridor that was never built, it turns out that there is a gap in between. So, the state said if we preserve this land, that would isolate this sliver, which you see in yellow there, in a way that would not be acceptable and prevent any future access, even though there is no use apparent that would go on this parcel. The county itself, upon realizing it owns this property, has it on its own list of properties that we don't really need and would like to actually get rid of, and, because it serves no purpose. It was acquired in the 70s. It was established back in the 30s by the railroad company that is now defunct. So, it has a long history of non-use. So, the solution to get this 42 acres of farm preserved under Mr. Raymond would sell that sliver, the .88 acres in yellow there, back to Mr. Raymond, and then. that sliver, the .88 acres in yellow there, back to Mr. Raymond, and then he would preserve the entirety and proceed with that process. So, we are establishing a fair market value for that transaction, although it has not been set yet, but today we're looking for a resolution of approval to engage in the sale.
Any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to approve resolution number one as described by Scott France? Moved by Commissioner Wyder. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to our personnel list, which will be presented by Tony Brew, Chief Human Resources Officer.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. You have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated April 30th, 2025, with a timestamp of 10:00 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the May 1st, 2025 personnel presentation as given by Mr. Anthony Brew?
Some moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wyder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to the advertisement of bids, RFPs for Montgomery County. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Wyder. Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Moving on to awards and contract. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B? Moved by Commissioner Wyder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Moving on to the South East PA Regional Task Force. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit C? Moved by Commissioner Wyder. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to general public comment. Do we have any commenters?
Marlene Laska.
Marlene Laska. I don't see a mic.
We can hear you.
Oh.
It's there.
Is this? Yeah, okay, okay. That's the mic. Okay. Marlene Laska, Upper Providence Township. I attended the logic and accuracy testing, and these are starting on the 20th of April 2025, and these are my observations. Due to the considerations, I am going to break up my total comments. So, this is only the first one. I'll be back. On page five of the directive on logic and accuracy testing, version 3.1, 7th of April 25, in bold and italic letters, it is stated that the department strongly discourages relying solely on automated L&amp;A testing or using only preprinted ballots provided by the vendor. Because preprinted test ballots, test deck ballots may be printed under different conditions than official election ballots, manual entry of votes using pre-ordered ballots prepared by the election officials on the same ballot prepared for voters is the most effective and way to identify potential errors and anomalies. That is, hand-generated test decks are definitely closer to how real voters would fill in the ballot. Also, manual entry of votes could check different pen types. For example, they fill in regular pens in different colors as well as in pencil. Arguments against not using manual entry were that a Bay County like Monco, given that election officials could be paid, they could not afford the expense. Also, it would be hard to duplicate not filling in a ballot, an oval completely, since the vendor uses precisely less than 33% to recognize a stray mark, et cetera. So, counterarguments for using manual entry are that all precincts in the county can use volunteers to generate their own test decks under the judge of elections supervision, i.e. the Joe. The Joe could generate test decks under, oh, okay. The Joe could ultimately be responsible for generation of the test decks within a given timeframe.
Thank you for your thought.
Even not fully completing an oval can be within a Joe's purview. Thank you, and stay tuned for additional comments.
Thank you. Any other comments?
David Morgan.
David Morgan from Amelor. I'll bring up my concerns first. I was concerned about that tax situation, and thank you, Mr. DiBello, for voting against the last tax increase in that just number vote. I'm going to bring up now some things that happened last meeting. There was a report about the fentanyl use, and although there was a lot of controversy politically going on now, it is amazing how fentanyl should be much less going across the border. We had problems with the border being open four years, and Narcan can really be a help in that solution. So, Commissioners, I applaud that you're helping with Narcan distribution, and also the human trafficking aspect of things with cartels. I encourage work to keep investigating that. And also, I was concerned about the woman who had that traffic accident with a child passing away, that how the law would handle in that situation, that another accident with that same driver or anything like that occurs again. So, those were some concerns from last meeting. I had to go to a Holy Thursday service. It was Thursday before Easter. Now, I want to compliment the Commissioners on that maternity care coalition grant that was announced in Radnor, sorry, in Ardmore, and thank you for your comments today, Commissioner Wyder, on mothers. Thank you, Commissioner Bell, for reinforcing the importance of that at Ardmore. This maternity care coalition can save lives. So, that's why I'm here, is to save lives, and also because Mother's Day is approaching today, we also know that it's the National Day of Prayer, May 1st. And so, I'm going to, with an instrument which I happen to have with me, come back, as I did last year for Mother's Day, to have another way of giving thanks for mothers. I'm going to start off with the Lord's Prayer a tiny bit, which Jesus said, and then I'm going to go right into the Cradle Song of Hubert.
Well, we can allow an extra minute.
Will anybody fall asleep for the answer? Lullaby type. I went close today to being at Ambor getting the Septa bus, and I support Septa, and I can tell stories about that. I saw a mother with five. She had three children, one in a stroller, and she had two dogs. So, it's a mother with five characters going along on Butler Avenue in downtown Ambor. That was a joy to me seeing that happen, so I encourage your efforts to support life. And if someone has a pregnancy unexpected, the Pregnancy Resource Centers, and also adopt them, because a lot of people are hoping to adopt, and that is a great route to consider for life. So, I keep bringing out taxpayers trying to make it through, but also the moms and children. So, that's, you'll see me often for that. As you said, she's going to be continuing as long as the Lord allows me to get here. So, thank you for your support of those areas.
Thank you. And that tune was so much more soothing than your budget comments typically. Appreciate that. Any other comments?
DA Kevin Stewart.
That's really, really hard to follow.
We did that on purpose.
So, I'm just here to thank you for the step forward that we made with the technology award today. The support of that contract to implement a modern system is critical to our office and our needs. And it's, for a modern prosecution office, it's not just a tool, it's the necessity to move forward in so many ways. We had national experts come in and do an assessment and look at our office, and that was one of the greatest needs that we have forward. I told you all on different occasions, you know, we're still doing statistics by hand in some of those. And so, in terms of what this can do and the movement forward on this, streamlining operations, increasing efficiency, improving accuracy, and enhancing transparency, which are all critical to this and will help us to collect and analyze data and improve public safety through innovation. So, this is really a big step forward, and I hope it will contribute to cost savings going forward, improve resources, and reduce even paper records that we are using and have all over our office. So, I just, Mayor, say thank you for supporting that and moving us in the right direction in that critical, critical area for public safety there. So, thank you.
Thank you. A quick question. Is this, how does this relate with the system that we voted on last year in relation to the police and the?
Yeah. So, one of the difficulties that we had with that, the police departments were not on the same records management system, and the one that was being developed and worked on didn't meet prosecutorial needs. And so, that's why we've had to kind of transition here and move to another system and go through that whole process to make it not just police-focused, but prosecution-focused. And I know you did one for the Public Defenders Office a little while back that was focused on public defenders and those needs. And I think and hope that when we work with all of these together, we're going to be, we're going to be leaps and bounds of where we are. You know, it's not going to solve all the issues, but it's certainly a big step in the right direction. And it's not going to be fast. This is probably what we're looking at, and when I spoke to the folks that come in, I'm like, well, how long is this going to take? Can we be up in three months or so? And it's probably more of an 18-month process to get through, but we'll push it along as quickly as we can. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Any other comments?
One last one on Zoom. Kaylee Taylor. Kaylee? You have to unmute Kaylee.
Yeah, can you hear me now? Yeah, so my name is Kaylee Taylor. I'm from Cheltenham, Pennsylvania, and my comments are related to the Norristown Detention Facility. I was very disappointed to hear that we've been, you know, kind of working along with ICE, and I really hope that we'll consider policies that more align with like what Philadelphia is doing.
So, you'll hear more from us in the coming week on that topic.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Any other comments? All right, any closing comments? I'll just say in regard to what the DA raised, the contract award was $1.2 million for the case management system. It's part of our broader interest in investing and innovating and making sure that we modernize government the way we operate, taking things off the paper. Systems like this across the board will allow us to be more efficient, to use AI, to analyze data, to improve service delivery across the board, to make things easier for staff that are, you know, working hard and perhaps doing things that we could automate. So, that's, you know, it's an exciting thing to be able to see that happening, you know, in the DA's office and across the board. So, looking forward to seeing that come through. And yes, it definitely takes time on all of these things, but our new office of Innovation Strategy and Performance is coming up with a plan across the board for different county offices and how we design systems or ways to modernize and, you know, increase our performance and efficiencies. So, I'm excited about that. This was a quick meeting. This was good. This is ideal.
Let's keep it going.
Let's keep it going. All right, with that, we have a retirement board coming up. Are we going to go straight into that, or? Okay. So, we can't, well, first we have Salary Board. So, I will make a motion to adjourn the May 1st, 2025 meeting, Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Seconded by.
Seconded by Commissioner Wyder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. And also, I should just note, the next meeting is May 15th, 10:00 a.m. in the boardroom. So, yeah. Now, we'll bring on our controller for the Salary Board and then first ask for public comment. Is there any public comment?
David Morgan.
Is it a musical comment or a verbal comment?
David Morgan of Ambor. I've noticed at the Salary Board meetings that Richard DiBello has a list in front of him. Also, it's a new positions list, which people will find on the table, but I sent to your attention on January, the large list of new positions and the costs that were involved, including five solicitors and two policy persons and other aspects that I think are just going to cause us to have an awful lot of spending. And recently, in this new positions, we have a labor liaison and a director of HR, talent management, and office support person six. So, the salaries can go up to $134,000. So, I'm just concerned that so many new positions, that we should maybe have a ongoing tracking of them, the public sees them, rather than have it just be paper over there and know the extent of new position creation so that we can have a tax even 0% or something like that by the end of the year, just to try to watch this cost increase. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
That's it.
Okay. I'll bring up Tony Brew, our Chief Human Resources Officer.
All right, good morning, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you a final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a four-page document dated April 30th, 2025, with a timestamp of 10:00 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for the Salary Board's consideration.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the May 1st, 2025 Salary Board presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew, Chief Human Resources Officer?
Some moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wyder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Controller Hart. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the May 1st, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
Some moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wyder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Controller Hart. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. So, should we go straight into the Retirement Board or come back at 12? Okay, so we'll be back here at noon for the Retirement Board. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.